Welcome everybody to another episode of The Professor and the Idiot. I'm Nick Wolfenger.
And I'm Dalton Whitehead.
And you had all that time to think about it and you're still Dalton Whitehead. Fantastic. The system works. And this week, we are pleased to bring you as a guest Kate Bradshaw. Kate Bradshaw is on the Bountiful Utah City Council. Dalton is one of her constituents as a Bountiful resident. So, we're always talking about government on this show with me being more optimistic about government and Dalton being a civic. So, I thought it would be interesting. I thought it would be interesting to bring on someone who is involved in running a city to see what it entails and see if we can change Dalton's mind. So, welcome Kate.
Well, thanks for inviting me. I'm looking forward to engaging with him. Next thing you know, we'll have him attending city council meetings. They'll be packed. It'll be great.
When are city council meetings for all the possible Bountiful residents who are listening?
So, we meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. Depending on if there's a work session, which is kind of like an optional kind of brainstorming session, those if we're going to have one will start at six or 6:30 depending on how much of an agenda. The formal city council meetings start at 7:00 PM. We have had an option where you know, we have a live stream on YouTube. Unfortunately, we're remodeling City Hall. Started a couple of months ago and we're in temporary quarters and while we're in temporary quarters, we don't have the ability to do the live stream. So, we're back to the old fashioned come in person or read the minutes version.
Okay.
So, can I ask your background? How did you get interested in serving on the city council? Is this your first elected office? Tell us what's your story Kate?
Sure. So, I actually was kind of intrigued when I got your invite to participate because I am the newest member of the Bountiful City Council. I was appointed in a special election last November. One of our city council members, Beth Holbrook, was appointed to be a new UTA Commissioner. If you follow trends at all, you know, we revamped as the state of Utah how UTA governance works. She was named as the Commissioner for Davis and Weber Counties and that required her to step down from her elected seat. So, I was elected in a special election. So, I've really been in office now seven-ish months. So, I'll fill out the remainder of her term through the end of 2019 and then I'm actually filed and running for election. It's technically reelection because I'm in office, but it doesn't feel like that because it'll be my first full-on reelection. And that period just closed for anyone filing and so I'll be in a primary race along with eight other candidates this summer and hopefully continuing on to this fall.
So, it's a city council, this is a partisan race?
It's nonpartisan. All municipal races in Utah are nonpartisan. So, you know, there's no delegates in a special election. There's no delegates in a general election. So, it's a little different than say like if there was a midterm vacancy at the state legislature.
But then how is there a primary if it's a nonpartisan election?
Well, so there's three city council seats that are open. Our city has all at-large seats. We don't have any districts, so everybody's representing all parts of the city. Because there are three seats that are open, if more than seven people filed, you go to a primary to whittle it down to six and move on. But there's no, no one is filing as a Republican or a Democrat or a Green Party.
Or a Libertarian.
Or a Libertarian.
Thanks Nick.
You're welcome. Is this the first time you've served in office?
This is the first time I have served in an elected office, yes.
What had you, oh, go on.
Well, what's been the biggest surprise?
Oh, the biggest surprise? I guess the biggest surprise is all the things. I, you know, I spend, in my day job, I spend time in government affairs. So, I've worked at the federal level and at the state level in government affairs for quite a while. But it's my first time spending a significant amount of time at the city level. I've actually been a little bit surprised about the nuances I haven't encountered that are new, that I need to do homework on and spend time thinking about thoughtfully. You know, a couple of examples. Today, we were getting into an issue with a fellow council member on our RAP tax grants. So, RAP tax, that's the Recreation Arts and Parks Tax. A lot of communities have them. We've set aside a small portion of ours for grants for different groups in the community that fit that RAP acronym. And we need to allocate them. We need to finalize our vote tomorrow. You know, a bunch of different groups have applied and some council members feel strongly about certain groups over other groups in their application. It's not, you know, how to allocate these grants and why one group would be more deserving? You know, is it because they're a bigger operation? They touch more people? Is it because they're smaller and they really couldn't exist without this assistance? You know, it's something I've had to think more about. Some of the more straightforward things like, you know, should we have body cameras? How important is clean drinking water? Those are the things I kind of expected, but some of these other little nuances, I hadn't thought about. Those have been surprising and they've been a good kind of exercise of, you know, what is important and why? And, you know, what makes the most sense broadly for a community? I have spent so much time thinking about Dalton even though he didn't know it in the last few months. It's been really interesting to think, to, you know, take what I want for my community, what I think we ought to do and be like, okay, but does that work for everyone or does that work for the majority? Because I've also learned I cannot make everyone happy. We're building a dog park. That has reinforced to me I cannot make everybody happy.
Some people don't want a dog park?
They don't. There's a vast majority that do want a dog park. Obviously, mostly people who have dogs. And there are some people who live near the proposed dog park that are not happy with the change in use of that particular piece of land. And they've let us, they've let us know and let me know in particular.
So, there's no one who wants a cat park?
Nobody's asked for a cat park. And I'm going to guess it has to do with fences not being good containment for cats. They'd have to have like a roof on it.
So, are people just concerned about the noise of a dog park or like what are their complaints when they bring that up?
Noise? So, noise gets mentioned, failing to pick up dog poop from park users. The park that we're converting, and you may be familiar with it, it's over by the Jeep Posse Building. It's called Brickyard Park. It's not been highly used, which is partly what made it a good candidate for different use. But the people whose backyards border it, to a certain extent, for them, it became an extension of their yard. They had so much of their own yard, but then they could kind of open up their back gate and they'd have this much bigger yard with a picnic pavilion and a play space. And so, do you feel like they couldn't go into their extended backyard because there might be some dogs running around? Didn't make them happy.
Hmm. Interesting.
That seems like a case of the common good outweighing the needs of a few homeowners.
Well, and there have been, there've been quite a number. This is actually one of the issues that got me involved in city government is that I have a dog. He's not a puppy now, but he was when I started on caring about this issue. And I was kind of tired of driving into Salt Lake to find a legal off-leash space to let him run around. He's a German Shepherd, so he has boundless energy. At the time, Bountiful had a rule that even on leash, dogs were not allowed in parks at all. And so, it was one of those where I contacted my city council members and said, this seems silly and archaic. We can't even go for a walk on leash. And have we ever thought about an off-leash space? And at the time, we were building, the city was building a new park over by Bountiful High. They were doing some open meetings about what should go there. And so, I started going and I found a few other people had come with the same, you know, why not dedicate some of the space for an off-leash dog area? So, it actually came in as like the second most popular option. And this park, this new park by Bountiful High School was not, it sloped. It wasn't, it probably wasn't perfect location. But what came out of that is the city said, let's find a spot. And it took them a couple of years of working and looking and then, you know, getting enough of the RAP tax to make the improvements that they're going to, we're going to open this new dog park at the end of the month. You know, it was in the polling that the city did of citizens to say what kind types of park and open space and recreation opportunities you're interested in. It came in number two behind a splash pad. And, you know, how can you not compete, you know, with a splash pad?
What's a splash pad?
Splash pad, you see them at like, City Creek Mall has one, you know, where like the water sprays up out of the ground. Sometimes it's time to music. Kids love them.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Kids take in parents, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've seen that. Yeah, I could see kids liking that in the summer.
Yeah, it's like a less maintenance pool.
Right.
You get cooled, but you don't have to deal with like chlorine and swim diapers.
And liability.
Yes. Yeah, lesser liability. There's probably still a decent amount of slip and fall.
Right.
Yeah.
So...
So, sorry, that was a very random segue.
Oh, that's fine.
This podcast's all about random segues.
So, as of now, what parks can you take your dog to? I didn't know that was a rule. I don't have a dog yet, so...
So, it's now been changed. So, you can take your dog, your future dog, future Fido, can go to any of Bountiful's parks on leash. There is a requirement that you stay off of like the playground equipment so that, you know, kids playing aren't scared by having a dog come up to them and slobber on them. But if you want to, you know, go walk around Fourth North Park since that's kind of near where you live, you know, jog around it or go over to the new Creekside Park, you know, check out the path by the stream, those are all legal as long as you're on leash. If you're off-leash, then you can be ticketed for being off-leash. This new park that'll open at the end of the month, that's where you can be off-leash. You could throw the ball for the dog or, you know, the dog can wrestle with other dogs and get worn out.
Dalton, I hope you're starting to see some of the value of what government does, namely build public facilities that everyone likes, like dog parks and splash pads.
Yeah, I'm not going to be anti-park.
You know, the parks, the parks are like the dessert, you know, of government. Like, you know, the veggies and your, you know, your main entree, those are like, you know, the police force, the, you know, your utilities, you know, your water, your power. Like, you need them. They're important. Veggies are important. But like what makes a place awesome or fun? It's really, it's your parks, it's your trails, it's your, you know, your other recreation opportunities. That's what makes someplace cool to live. And I have yet to find somebody who maybe, you know, except for the few people who border, who's helped, who's boarded the dog park, most people are pretty excited about when you announce a, you know, a new trail project or, you know, a new park that's coming.
Are you involved in funding festivals, arts festivals, that kind of thing?
So, part of these RAP tax allocations that we'll be voting on tomorrow go towards some of the groups that have requested are Bountiful Davis Art Center.
Oh, yeah.
I think I'm allowed to disclose. They're all public, yeah. I was going to say, they're grandmaable documents, so I can't really say what, until we officially vote what they've asked for, but they've historically received funds too, so I think that's all legit. But the Bountiful Davis Art Center, so that's, you know, they host different types of art shows.
Oh, yeah.
High school art fair, yeah.
I've been to art shows there.
Yeah, yeah. There's the Centerpoint Theater, you know, it's a community theater. It's actually in Centerville although it has a joint inter-local agreement between Bountiful and Centerville to build it. And Centerville has primary operation responsibilities, so there's kind of a theater option. We have a cool chalk art festival, which is actually put on by the Joy Foundation and it's a fundraiser to help with their at-risk youth programs. The Bountiful Historical Society put in a request. Basically, anyone who's in the community, who's a nonprofit, who meets that definition of recreation arts and parks, you know, if you think you can fit in that umbrella, then you can apply each year when the application's open.
Dalton, do you want to get involved in trying to create a Bountiful Jiu-Jitsu Tournament?
No, I'm not really into organizing tournaments, more just competing in them.
That's how we know each other is through Jiu-Jitsu.
Actually, I listened to your first episode and I couldn't remember what martial art it was, but that it was, that was mentioned.
Yeah. This question popped in my head. Is there any issues or anything that, I'm trying to ask, or find the smartest way to ask this. Is there anything you wish that you didn't have to govern over or any problems that you're like, I don't think we should be involved in this? Is there any things that you feel like the government shouldn't be, have control over? In your position?
In my position? Well, so the city, you know, the city level is, you know, everybody's got their lane, right? Like, you know, I'm not in charge of, I have no votes and no money and no authority over tariffs or border walls. I don't have any authority over, you know, like things at the state level like alcohol policy or, you know, the fight over our public lands or funding education. Like, all of those are kind of like outside my lane. We aren't delegated authority to do those things. We don't have budget to do those things. Occasionally, you'll see cities, or you'll see at all levels of government, well, they'll run resolutions or things like that and try and tell the other lanes what to do and why. You know, I would say probably my governing philosophy is with maybe very rare exception, you know, I don't know that it does a ton of good for the city of Bountiful to send a resolution on something that, you know, I don't have, you know, funding or authority to intervene in. Like, you know, for instance, Riverton, the city of Riverton in Salt Lake County did a resolution on abortion recently. Sometimes you'll see cities do resolutions on, like I think it's Laverkin that very famously has a UN free zone.
Yes.
You know, things like that. Like, I'm kind of like, those are, I don't think that's probably what, you know, the people that live near me, my neighbors, want me to spend my time on. You know, when, you know, for the amount of my time that they're kind of compensating me for to do this, I think they're more interested in the things that are close to home, like, you know, can we get a crosswalk on the street because it's busy and, you know, the elementary school kids are taking their life in their hands to dash across and, you know, if they see graffiti popping up, they want that taken care of and those types of things are I think what the people of Bountiful want me to spend my time on when I'm acting on their behalf.
You got me thinking about all the famous cases in the last 20 years of city governments acting outside their lane, like that goofy Laverkin resolution against the UN. The city of Independence in Utah around the same time passed a resolution that everyone in the city had to own a gun. You know, Rocky and...
And I just, I'm like, I don't, how are we going to enforce that?
Yeah.
And you know what? Half of my jackets don't have pockets. Like, where would I put that?
I guess maybe this is a better way to frame my question is, do you ever have people come to complain about something at a city council meeting and either your answer is or maybe just your thought is, that doesn't involve us, that you're going to have to figure that out on your own? Like, just stuff like that happen?
Yeah, there is that. Sometimes, sometimes it's because I'm referring them to a different level of government. Like, I had someone recently who, you know, we have secondary water in most of Davis County. You know, we call it Weber Water. It's run by a special service district, so they're not, they're not under the authority of the city. And they have some storage tanks, ponds. There's a bunch of them on Davis Boulevard and it's kind of a major, for Nick, this is kind of a major street in our town that goes north-south. And some people don't, they don't like, they don't like their, the aesthetic of those open, you know, water ponds that are what fill up so that you can water your lawn all summer with secondary water. And we, quite frankly, have very cheap secondary water because of whatever long ago people thought up, setting up this secondary water system with the special service district. But, you know, with, you know, maybe some very minor exceptions, like how they run those ponds, how they, you know, what fences they use on them, things like that, they're, you know, they're kind of outside of our authority as a city council. And this person wanted us to cover the ponds, you know, and maybe like grass them over. And the answer that I gave them was, well, they're not ours. Like, the city can't do that. They're the special service district's pond. And the water, because it's untreated, it's secondary water, it's very silty and so they have to go in with that code, you know, in the fall each year and scrape out that silt or otherwise the ponds would just slowly fill up, you know, over time. And if you put obviously a lid, a cap on them, it'd be really hard to get a backhoe in there. So, anyway, this person did not like that answer. They would really like them to look nicer. And so, ultimately, I said, let me get you the contact information for the executive director for that special service district because I'm at an end of what I can do to help you. Because it's not within the city's authority. We don't own the property. We're not in charge of maintaining the secondary water in our town. And so, I think that person was kind of disappointed that I'd reached the end of kind of what I could, what I could offer to help. And so, you know, they probably, they're probably less excited to talk to somebody who doesn't live in Bountiful, you know, doesn't know exactly, you know, what they're talking about and not finding these tanks, you know, attractive because they probably live somewhere else.
Can I just return for a second to the question of going outside the lane? Just to comment, there's something really entertaining that was in the New York Times a few weeks ago. It was about Bernie Sanders' early political career and the eight years or so, he was the mayor of Burlington, Vermont. And unusually for a mayor, he conducted a foreign policy. He was always issuing proclamations about foreign policy. He was always visiting other countries, especially most infamously, the Soviet Union. You know, I don't know how much this made his constituents happy, but it was certainly a good way for him to make a name for himself.
Yeah, and, you know, I have a, I actually have a good friend who is the mayor of Encinitas, California. And, you know, it's a little bigger community. I think they do have partisan city offices there. And, you know, she, she and I are on each other's newsletter list. And I always get a kick out of, you know, she'll take probably a much bolder stand about things like climate change. Now, she has a city on a beach, so that's a real local issue too for her. But, you know, she'll take, I sometimes issues on, takes stances on national issues where, you know, where I often have not felt, and, you know, I'm still a newbie at this, haven't felt like that was probably my role. And maybe, maybe my friend has greater ambitions, just like Bernie. And so, that could be, that could be part of it too. But, you know, it may also come down to personality and also what's your constituents, you know, kind of want to do. Some cities carry an outsized footprint. I mean, Salt Lake City being the capital city for Utah and having, you know, the vast majority of business and, you know, the vast majority of, you know, institutions, the University of Utah, you know, Eccles Theater, things like that, like, you know, maybe they get to say outsized things that Bountiful as a city of the third class, because we have this ranking system in state code about, you know, what things you're allowed to do and how broad your authority is and, you know, based on your size. And so, you know, we're in the third biggest category and so that changes how much people want to listen to when we say things.
What can't you do because you're a third-class city?
So, for instance, cities of the first class, and so those are like Salt Lake, Ogden, West Valley, Sandy, Provo. I think that's all the cities of the first class. They can exercise, for instance, watershed authority. Sometimes you'll see, hear controversies about Salt Lake City's watershed authority in big and little cottonwood canyons, for instance. And so, because of the size of their city and the importance of protecting drinking water, watershed for such a large population, they get to exercise this jurisdiction outside of their city boundaries. Bountiful does not because our population is smaller and therefore the state says you don't need to, you know, go as far outside of your boundaries to make sure that the water, your drinking water's safe.
That totally makes sense. Plus, I assume Salt Lake then has the specialists necessary to analyze water purity that Bountiful probably doesn't have?
Yeah, I mean, everything's, you know, I had breakfast the other morning with a Salt Lake City Councilwoman and we were talking about air quality. We were talking about the refineries, you know, Salt Lake City has some refineries. Bountiful doesn't actually have any although they're near us, you know, in Southern Davis County. Bountiful's the biggest city in Southern Davis County. And so, one of my comments through it was, we aren't as sophisticated as Salt Lake City's staff. We don't, our budget's much smaller. So, you know, your staff in talking about air quality and, you know, ideas on how to maybe incentivize the refineries and do those different things is just, it's just greater than the staff of Bountiful City. And so, you know, on some instances, some people might not be as interested in what Salt Lake has to say because they're seen as being, you know, very blue slash green. But on the other hand, you have expertise we're just not going to have because we're not as big. And we're much bigger. Bountiful is bigger than North Salt Lake and West Bountiful and Woods Cross and Farmington and Centerville. And so, they certainly don't have that expertise either.
How big is the budget, annual budget for Bountiful?
So, our budget, we are just entering budget cycle, so this is good because I have recently spent time looking at our big budget binder. So, our city budget is about $74 million. It sounds, it sounds like a lot. I'm going to tell you that we operate a municipal power system, so we have Bountiful Power versus, you know, Rocky Mountain Power in other areas. You know, Murray has their own municipal power. There's some others, but it's kind of unique. And so, because we are generating power and selling it to residents, that's actually the biggest chunk of our budget. The funds that are dedicated to generating and then the fees, you know, that people pay for their, on their power bill, you know, so that kind of offsets. So, the part of the budget that's not as tied to that is probably more in like the 30 to 40 million dollar range. So, because I think people hear that and they're like, wow, we have tons of money. And I'm like, well, it takes a lot of money to generate electricity too, so...
And I assume then the lion's share goes to police and fire?
Police, fire, we have a, we actually have a special service district for fire. We share fire with the other South Davis County cities. We contribute to that, but we share resources. So, we don't, for instance, have our own fire chief, but we do have our own police chief. So, biggest chunks of the budget are police, roads, both the construction and maintenance within our snowplow budget, our salt budget. This year, the salt budget was significant.
I definitely contributed towards that with my tickets for parking on the street during winter hours.
Do you have a... I know, that's a hard one for people. Yeah, we do have a winter parking ordinance.
I don't mind it if there's actually snow on the ground or snow forecasted, but I got ticketed when there hadn't been snow for weeks and I was just like, come on. got ticketed when there hadn't been snow for weeks, and I was just like, come on.
We are, actually Dalton and I in a previous episode argued about this for ten or fifteen minutes. So, it's good to hear.
I know, this is, this is one of those where you almost like you can't win, because on one, on one hand, it's hard to do the, you know, well, you know, we had a low chance of snow, but nothing came, so I parked, so I should be safe, and, you know, versus, quite frankly, for government, it's easiest to say, just, you know, don't park on the street between, you know, this date and this date because, you know, the likelihood is high. And when you, when we do have a snowstorm and you do have cars parked all over, it makes it harder to clear the streets. You know, we, we are a city on a hill, in fact, it's more than a hill, we're a city on a mountain. And so, the trucks do slide, I mean, they're out before the snow's cleared, and so occasionally, you know, our, our, our plow trucks can take out a parked car coming down the hill.
Does that satisfy you, Dalton?
I was just saying, I feel like this is one I probably won't win with Dalton, I'm, I'm sensing that he's, he would like a more specific forecast of when he's going to be on and when he has to be off.
No, it's not so much the, the rule or the reasoning behind the rule, it's the cops and just like, come on, dude, why, why are you putting a ticket on my car now? I don't know. To me, I was more like, the cops should just be like, yeah, it's definitely, there's definitely no snow coming for the next week. And, because Nick praised the government-funded weather forecasting in the past, I was like, well, if we're going to trust our government-funded weather forecasting, then our government employees should, uh, look, take a look and not ticket people and, when there's clearly no snow coming. But I see your point, I mean, I don't know, it's just a minor frustration. To be honest, that's the only time I've ever had anything to bitch about when it comes to the Bountiful City Government. I think you guys, I think you guys do a pretty...
Okay, so we're like, we're like ninety-nine percent awesome, it's just this like one percent annoying.
Yeah, I've never, just me personally, I've lived here my whole life, I've never once thought like, I'm going to, this is an issue I need to take up with my government. It's a pretty good place to live, so. Other than cops ticketing when I personally think they shouldn't ticket, that's the only issue I have, so. You guys are doing a pretty damn good job.
Well, I'm a pretty big fan of our police chief, Chief Ross, but he does, he does a great job with his, with his officers, with their training and, uh, in, in leading, leading by example, so. If that's your only beef, then I, then I think we're doing all right.
How much crime is there in Bountiful?
You know, so, like, like Dalton, I grew up in Bountiful, and I used to think of it as, as a full-on Mayberry, you know. I remember, I remember cutting class from Bountiful High to go get donuts at Carmax, which burned down before Dalton would have ever been able to slip class and do the same.
But, uh, that's actually one of my best buddies, his dad and grandpa own that Luke Carm, Luke Carmack.
Yeah, so, anyway, I cut class, I totally did, and I drove over to go get donuts with my buddies. And I think before I'd probably even like sunk my teeth into the donut, someone had called my parents and let them know that they had seen me during school hours. And so, I was like grounded before I'd even eaten the donut. And, and like, I honestly thought like we had nothing better going on, there was like so nothing that I lived in Mayberry. I remember also, having it reported, I was speeding on Orchard before I'd even made it home. So, that's, that's kind of what I always thought. I will say, you know, becoming an adult, you know, owning property, seeing different, you know, things like that, you know, maybe it's changed my perspective just a little bit of, of anywhere, you know, I mean, I used to think Salt Lake was, you know, close to a Mayberry. You know, we do get, we do get reports and, and updates on things that happen, we get updated police stats. I would, I would say that, you know, there's probably more things that happen than people think. You know, the opioid epidemic has, you know, it's hit, it's hit every community, so you get, you get people that have OD'd and the police respond, you get, you know, you get DUIs. I think, you know, unfortunately, domestic violence happens in, you know, upper-middle-class communities as, as much as you might think it happens in, you know, poorer parts of town. And so, we definitely have things that happen. Although, one of my favorite instances that I think demonstrates our, our still really low crime is, and this happened about a month ago, we had a knock on our door at like ten thirty at night, and, you know, we have one of those ring doorbells that everybody has now. And so, my husband and I are looking at it, and we're like, we don't recognize this guy, but he keeps ringing the doorbell. And my husband's already in his jammies, so I drew the short straw to go answer the door. So, I answered the door, and it was a guy who had stopped because our next-door neighbor's garage door was wide open with all of their toys and all the kid stuff and, you know. And he said, I rang their doorbell and they, they didn't answer, and I just thought, it's getting late and, you know, you wouldn't want your, you know, their stuff might walk away and, you know, you'd probably know how to contact them if they aren't home to shut their garage door. That is the community we live in, people stop to tell you, your neighbor's garage door is open, not to go take the stuff out of the garage.
Wow. Nick, do you have any other questions?
No, I, uh, I think not, I just want to make sure, a couple, a couple more, but I want to make sure that Dalton is satisfied with how important municipal governance is and see if he needs any more, sorry, any more convincing.
You know, I think, you know, you don't have to look too far, you know, Sandy, um, just, oh, it was like in March, they had a, they got too much...
Sorry, cut out, Nick.
What?
Sorry, Nick, what did you say? You cut out there.
Oh, no, I, oh, I just said, I just hope Dalton is convinced about the importance of municipal governance, and if he isn't, if Kate can offer any more reassurance.
Uh, then I was just going to bring up the, you know, the issue that Sandy had where they got, they got, I think it was too much fluoride, maybe it was too much chlorine, but maybe it was too much fluoride, and they had a power outage and it like fried a piece of equipment, and they had this automatic feed system for their water purification and, you know, some people got sick, they had to, you know, shut and flush down the water, some people were without water for a couple days. And I always, people, people always think that, you know, being president or being a US Senator, like, that's like the cool sexy, like, level of government, like, you know, world peace and, you know, using the red phone to call Moscow. And I, I always think it's, there's, there's actually, people notice so much more if like you go to turn on your faucet and there's like a boil order because the water's been contaminated, or, you know, if your streets weren't plowed and you weren't able to get to work and your boss was, was mad, you know, that you were late because you slipped and slid it all the way, you know, fighting your way to work in the morning. So, it's, it's not, it's not brokering world peace, it's, it's, you know, I'm not calling in a, a strike force, but it's the things that I think touch my neighbors every single day.
Yeah. I think that's one of the great contradictions of modern time, politics have become much more nationalized. We pay attention to what senators and presidents and congressmen are doing, but it's the local government that affects our lives a lot more.
Yeah, I, and, you know, here, here, I, I think, I think Dalton's thinking about getting a dog, are you thinking about getting a dog?
Yeah, I just need a different place to live that has a better backyard. So, it might not be for a while, but it will definitely eventually happen.
See, and here, his city is already thinking about him and his need for an awfully huge dog park.
Oh, it's one last question, is there an issue that's like your own personal primary issue that you want to tackle? You know, is there something that like you've discovered since becoming a council member that you're like, to me, this is the most important, or, I don't know, is more personal to you than, than maybe other issues?
Well, I'd say there's, there's one kind of big policy issue that, that I care a lot about, but then there's also kind of a communication and transparency issue I care about. So, I, I have been assigned, my assignments are the, are parks and rec, basically a Leslie Nope. And so, I, and I care about those issues, obviously, I care about a dog park, I love mountain biking, we're working on a trails master plan, you know, I...
Oh, cool.
I went up to Elephant Rock this morning, I mean, I, I love mountain biking, I love trails. So, I care about our, our outdoor options, whether it's parks or trails or things like that. So, that's a, that's a policy area I want to spend time on, that I think, you know, Bountiful could continue to improve upon. You know, in terms of kind of our governance, you know, we haven't done a good job with communications. And tied to communications is transparency. Now, we're meeting all applicable, like open and public meetings laws, and, you know, we're appropriately posting agendas and all of those things, like, we're, we're meeting that minimum threshold. But I think our city got a little complacent in the era of the small local papers, you know, the Davis County Clipper was our local paper, and it, it was published three times a week and, and they covered local governments. And now it's published once a week and, you know, they, they don't have much of a budget and, so things don't get covered. And so, finding out what's happening in the city is, if you're not going to, if you're not going to, you know, come on the second and third, second and fourth Tuesdays, and especially now that we're in temporary space and you can't even watch online, so sometimes we're not good at telling people what's going on, and they're surprised, and they react because they're surprised. And so, I would like for us to continue to work on communications, you know, because that leads to more transparency, so that you know, you know, that your tax dollars are being used, you know, to build a new park, or, you know, that we've updated our storage for body cam footage for the police department, you know, because that, that's important. If you have to request one of those, it's, it's a tough day, and you should, we should definitely have that stored for you. And, you know, how, how we're going about spending your money, you know, are we, are we getting the best price on the power poles we have to buy? All of those things, I just think we could do a better job of, of telling people like Dalton so that, um, he would, he would have access to the information, it could be easier to find. Our website, I think, could be better, our social media could be better, on all of those things, because we have to find ways to, 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 to take care of what local media used to do and doesn't anymore.
I was surprised, in fact, on your website, that like there wasn't a link for, for you to give a short biography for you and other council members.
No, there, there really, there really isn't, in fact, I think you can email me, but I don't, I don't think my, my phone number's listed, you could probably call the staff and they'd, they'd give it to you.
Right.
Um, now granted, we don't have like, I don't have an office at City Hall, that's, you know, how part-time, you know, city councils work, it's not like I have an office. If I needed to hold a meeting there, I could use the conference room or something, but, you know, I use my home or my, my day job office.
What's the pay, what's the pay for city council in Bountiful?
Oh, okay, so, how about I just tell you what comes after taxes, because I don't know what it is before withholdings?
Sure.
Sure, so I, my paycheck each month is seven-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars.
Okay.
Um, of that two-hundred of it is, um, like travel reimbursement and using my own cellphone and stuff like that. So, really, the, the pay part is about five-hundred bucks a month.
Okay.
And it's probably a little bit more because of withholdings, but who, who could figure out what things are pre, pre-taxes?
Right, right.
It was darn taxes.
That's just what shows up, that's just what shows up in, in the old checking account each, each month.
Dalton, you good?
Yeah, um, is it, is it a full-time gig being a city council member, or is it, like, how often are you working on this stuff?
So, it is, it is officially a, a part-time elected official position. Certain sizes of cities have full, like, Salt Lake City has a full-time mayor and then a part-time council. At Bountiful, we have what's called a city manager, mayor form of government, so we have a full-time city manager who's kind of day-to-day running things. And then the mayor and the city council are in charge of policy and expending money and things like that. But like, we don't necessarily hire and fire police officers or snowplow drivers and things like that. So, it's, it's, everyone on the council and the mayor have a full-time job in addition. In addition to this, like, it would be obviously tough to live on the city council salary.
Yeah, that's all...
Some of them are close to retirement age, but, but are still, everyone is, is still working. And, so I would say it varies week to week and it varies in different seasons. Budget season requires a little bit more time, sometimes issues pop up, you know, I've done, I've done a little bit more trying to meet with residents on the, that were upset about the dog park, because it was an issue I championed and kind of fell in my, my assigned responsibility areas. So, it kind of, it kind of peaks and valleys. I try to, I try to respond to everyone that emails me or calls me within twenty-four hours, unless I'm like out of town. I wouldn't say I get tons of email, every once in a while, something pops up and everybody tells their neighbors, CCs their neighbors, and then the neighbors all, all reply to. But it, I wouldn't say it's probably more on average than five to ten hours a week, some weeks more and some weeks not very much.
That's not bad.
Okay.
No, I mean, I'm affectionately calling it my side hustle.
Fair enough.
Do you have to be a registered Democrat or Republican to vote for city council?
No, nope, um, it, you know, in the, in the partisan primaries, like to vote in the Republican primary, you have to be a registered Republican, but for the city council primaries, it doesn't matter if you're registered as any party or if you're registered as unaffiliated, you're eligible to vote.
Okay, well, maybe the first time I vote will be to vote for you.
Awesome, I definitely, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be working hard to, to let people know I'm, I'm running and I, I care and want to continue to, to do this kind of work.
And on that, on that basis, we can issue our first-ever voting endorsement, and that is for Kate Bradshaw for Bountiful City Council.
Yeah.
Sweet. Do you guys have like a logo I can put on my, on my website?
We do, we have a logo, I'll email you the file.
Well, and I just got my campaign website up and, and ready to roll over the weekend.
All right, I'll, I'll email that to you.
And then you can say, listen to me, listen to this podcast, and you can hear what I'm all about.
And this will come out a week from Thursday, this Thursday, we have a public defender on, and then so a week from Thursday, this will come out, so I'll send you a link to the YouTube.
Okay, hey, I have some questions for you guys, can I still ask questions?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, so, so you, you picked Bountiful because Dalton lives in Bountiful?
Yes.
So, you're looking at all of those other pictures of my, of the mayor and council colleagues, why did you pick me? Or did you email all of them and I was the first to respond?
No, you were the first I emailed and you responded. I also emailed some of my city council people and they did not respond. But I, we, um, I emailed and finally one after, the, the third or fourth one I contacted emailed me back with a sort of a maybe after a week. But I, then I went to Dalton, to Bountiful, and I emailed you and you emailed me back instantly.
Okay, so, but why did you pick me when you were looking at all those, you know, those other people? I'm just curious.
I have to go, I have to go back to the Bountiful City Council page, because I think I have it open. Why did I pick you? Um, you were the first one after the mayor.
Oh, okay, I think, I wonder if it was listed alphabetically, I haven't looked at it in a while.
Uh, no, it's not, it's the mayor, and then it's you reading left to right, Chris Simonson, John Marknight, Kendall and Harris, and then Richard Higginson.
Yeah, that's like no order at all, I don't know why we picked that order. I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, so you just, you just were looking and you were like, all right, that one.
Yes, that one.
That, that woman right there.
Yeah, she looks like someone who would answer my email.
The reality is, I'm the youngest one on the council, actually, I was wondering if that was why, is because you were like, okay, the youngest one will know what a podcast is.
That's probably true, yeah. Yeah, our oldest guest is, was eighty, and he was not entirely sure what a pod was.
Yeah, all right, because I was, I was really, I was like, I wonder why they picked me, like, is it going to be about the dog park? I hope they're not mad about the dog park.
No, I want the dog park.
Awesome, spread the word, you can even, you could even come, the grand opening is going to be the twenty-fifth, is that a Tuesday? Now, I'm not looking at a calendar. Now I'm not looking at a calendar. So it's Tuesday the twenty-fifth at five o'clock.
You could borrow a dog, Dalton.
Yeah, maybe I'll steal one at the event.
Maybe. We're still working on plans. I would like us to bring something from the, some dogs from maybe the animal shelter that need a home.
Yeah, that's great.
And maybe you'd look into a, the big brown eyes of a puppy and take him home.
I definitely would want to. Well, thank you very much. This has been a good one. It's nice actually talking to people who make the rules and when they sound sane and rational.
Right.
Thank you. I'm going to put that on like a sticker.
Sane and rational. Did you have any other questions for us, Kate?
Um, so I think I understood from your first podcast, Nick, you teach it to you.
I do. I live in-
You're-
Oh, go on, sorry.
But you live in California.
Most of the time.
So you're like back and forth off.
Yeah, yeah.
And Dalton, you're going to Salt Lake Community College?
Not at the moment. I'm doing in-
Not at the moment, okay.
Yeah, I'm doing an apprenticeship to be a journeyman fire sprinkler fitter. So it's kind of a full-time gig, so maybe once, once I'm kind of done with that, I'll jump back to school, so.
Well, no, I spent, I spent some time with the independent electrical contractors and the Utah Plumbing and Heating Association, so, you can, you can make some very decent money doing, going through trade school. So you guys, so your bond is really based on, I'm going to say jiu-jitsu?
Yeah, jiu-jitsu.
Do you follow that?
Or just grappling?
Yeah, just grappling, yeah. Yes, we met there at Salt Lake Grappling Club and we were, we had plenty of time to talk before, during, and after class. And Dalton was always asking me questions as someone who was older. And finally, he said, "Hey, we should do a podcast where I ask you questions and it's called The Professor and the Idiot." And I said, "That's a brilliant idea and that's our title." And then we realized after us talking, just the two of us for a few episodes, it would be better if we brought on guests.
So he's not getting like any, like even internship credit or anything for this?
No.
No, it's just for fun.
Yeah.
It just feels like you could turn it into like internship credit. I don't know.
Well, we're trying to make money eventually. If we get enough listeners, then we can have ads and make money, but-
Oh, okay.
That'll be definitely down the road, unless somebody famous promotes us and we just blow up.
You know what you should do? So the Lieutenant Governor has a podcast called Cox and Friends. He's clearly running for governor, right? So he's, he's, he's out there. You should have like the podcast interview the podcast, because that might get you more listeners and kick you into this paid realm.
That's, that's an idea. This wouldn't be the first time we had someone else who does a podcast on. Yeah, maybe he'd be willing, maybe he'd be willing to do it just as a way of outreach for his campaign.
Yeah, he did an episode of his podcast at the League of Cities and Towns Conference, filmed it, you know, with mayors and city council members there to talk about local government issues. Anyway, it would, anyway, I just think it would be, it would be funny to have, you know, a new startup podcast, interview someone who's been doing it a while and kind of has a following because of his much higher political office.
Right. God, maybe I'll shoot him an email. Thanks for the lead.
I think you should tweet him. I feel like he's more on Twitter.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, I have a few thousand followers, I could do that. All right. All right, thank you.
All right, well, thanks and I'll look forward to this in two weeks, you said?
Two weeks. All right, thank you so much, Kate.
All right, see you later.
All right, bye-bye. Thanks for listening to another episode of Professor and the Idiot. If you like what you heard, go to Apple Podcasts and give us a good rating so that others may find us and we can expand our social media juggernaut. And if you didn't like it, fuck off to the place you came from.